We'll call our meeting to order and on behalf of the Board of Education, welcome to our September workshop. We're very excited to have you join us and I know we are excited about digging deeper into the new budget. There's a lot of changes that are coming and so we will thank Roger in advance for working with us. And we're very excited about looking at qualitative and quantitative look at our wellness and so we thank our audience for being present so we can learn a little more. Madam Secretary, are we present?
All members are present.
Thank you very much. Today is Patriots' Day in Indiana and in honor and remembrance of those lives that have been lost during the tragic times during the terror attack on 9/11, the Board will ask that everybody stand and stay standing following the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silent reflection and then we will get started with our meeting. So with that, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, the first item on our agenda is consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're moving into our workshop topics and you'll notice on the agenda it does say presentations of the budgets first. We're going to flop that or flip that. We're going to start with our wellness presentation and for that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Originally, we were going to save the best to last but in light of everything, I'm anxious to actually present this and I think the Board's going to really look and the public's going to really be very interested in what we have to say. And before I start, I want to thank Board members because when we started this initiative, we would not have gotten very far without your support. And we've come a long way. We started thinking about the concept of wellness in about 2010 or 2011. And at that time, it was wellness. It was not about well-being. And really was initiated, as most of these were, from a financial standpoint escalating costs for medical expenses and so the idea of an onsite clinic or wellness center is beginning to catch on and been around for a long time in industrial environment but not in schools. And so in 2011, we began a conversation. 2012, we started doing a few things and many of you will remember this, but we did some -- we did blood draws. We started a pedometer program. We still have the pedometer program. We have about 1,275 people participating in that. And in 2013 though, the big event happened in the spring when we opened the Wellness Center. And that really was huge. But at that time, we were -- we continued to be focused on physical health. Now, we had doctors and nurses and lab people and exercise physiologists, dieticians and so forth, but it was still physical wellness. And then in 2015, we began to move from wellness to well-being. And at that point, we started offering fitness classes and what looks like fitness classes, but it's really part of a much bigger picture. And then in 2016, we added -- first, we added one mental health professional, then we added in a short time, she soon got booked up, so we added a second. And that was very much needed and very -- continues to be very successful. Then in 2017, we added physical therapy. Now, we added some other things along the way, but these are at least the big pieces. And also in 2017, we began to expand the fitness idea to include social well-being. There's really like four aspects of well-being. There's physical behavior or emotional, social, and then financial. And I'm going to get to the financial piece here in a minute. And then in 2018, so we've added all of those and now we're really -- we don't talk much about money. We talk about people. And so this upcoming year, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to also add an element of financial well-being. We have a demonstration of a software package that is all about -- that's really started in at universities for students to dealing with student loans and things like that. But of course, there's a lot more to it than that. So at this point, I really want to turn this over to the people that are making all this happen and starting with Richard Sutton. Richard is our insurance consultant. He's been around here longer than I have and he's certainly helped us a lot along the way. So, Richard, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Roger. Is that where I stand?
Yep, indeed. Go up there. They can't get you on the mic.
Or use the handheld.
Okay, we'll do that.
You can use the handheld.
That'd be perfect. You hear me? Okay, here. Better? 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 Okay. That sounds like my right. So, thank you for allowing us to be here. Again, I'm Richard Sutton with RE7 Associates. I've been your benefit advisor for many, many years. It's been a great marriage. We've worked well together, great outcomes. So, we're here to talk about your Wellness Center. RE7 Associates works with schools around the state. We work with about 180 school systems. So, a lot of schools, that's really our specialty. We also do a lot of work with wellness centers, onsite, nearsite medical clinics. I remember many years ago talking to Roger about the possibility of opening a clinic, a Wellness Center in Carmel and he said, "I like that. I like the wellness components, but when we do this, I want ours to be the very best." And I can truly say, it is the very best. Since the time you opened your doors, six years with no rate increases, rapidly growing reserves, no change in benefits. I mean, that's remarkable. So, that's the financial component. Beyond that, I would have to tell you just the idea that you have really impacted people's health the way you have is remarkable. So, very good job. I'm pleased to be a little part of this. I'm going to turn this over to Mary Delaney. Mary Delaney's going to do a lot of data analytics and do a very good job with that. Congratulations to you.
I didn't advance the slides once for you, so I saw it. Sorry. I'm going to actually stay here so I can advance the slides, but I'll keep that off to the side. So, my name is Mary Delaney. I am the President of Vital Insight. I'm a population health analyst and consultant and I work with about 140 employers all over the country from Anchorage, Alaska down to Miami, Florida. And what our goal is, is to be able to help employers make better decisions about their benefits, to remove the medical spend waste and actually provide services that improve the health of people, which is hard to come by in the U.S. at this point. So, I was brought in by Richard Sutton to evaluate the clinic and then to continue to provide data analytics to help the clinic even advance their strategies. So, the first thing I'm able to show you, which is obviously a very positive trend, is what if you're -- if we took the amount that you spend on a P-E-P-M basis, starting in 2011, and used a very conservative trend of 7.5%, which is considered very conservative, you could see that where that would be in the red line. But instead, your blue line is what your actual P-E-P-M spend is. So, the delta between that is your savings with your strategies and how you've been able to kind of beat the trend across the nation. And again, let me tell you, the 7.7 or 7.5% trend is very conservative. I know UHC sometimes in our analysis will tell us to use 9.5. So, it's a very positive trend using very conservative approach. In our analytics, we use Johns Hopkins Risk Indexing, which allows us to look at every belly button on a plan and look at people with similarly situated risk and how efficient the system is at providing the care that's paid for through the employer plan. Now, this is showing you, what I want you to focus in on is you see that on the top chart, that's showing you where your lives are and we typically see that it's like a bell curve and that the majority of the lives have moderate risk, which are people with chronic conditions that are mostly controlled is generally who fits in a moderate risk category. So, the majority of our people are there. So, when we look at the efficiency of a plan, we are looking mostly at the moderate risk category. And you will see that there's a red box and I'm sure if any of you are in education, you understand the red box is not necessarily a good thing. So, we do see that Carmel Clay Schools is spending more on their moderate risk people than our Midwest benchmark, which is mostly people from Indiana. Our Midwest is very strong Indiana. That could be a bad sign if that investment, that additional investment is actually not doing a better job improving the health of your population. But instead, what we see, and I will explain this in a little bit more, is that you're actually doing a better job than benchmark at improving health. And I do want to warn you that benchmark means the -- what all of our clients look like across the country and we all know that the United States is not doing a wonderful job with cost efficiency or improving health. So, you are doing better than average in the U.S. So, I don't want to take that away from you. It's a very positive thing, but it's not the endpoint of where we want to be. So, what you see in this, the goal with any type of population health program is you want to keep the healthy people healthy. You want to allow your people with moderate risk to either maintain or improve their risk and then you want your high to very high-risk people to get healthier. So, what we see in this is that you actually, your healthy people are getting less healthy at a very slightly, one percentage point worse than our benchmark. But you have to realize when people are using healthcare more regularly, you're actually identifying risk earlier. So, it could give the perception that they're getting less healthy, but you're likely just identifying more risk. So, that's not really that bad of a trend. But what you do see is for your moderate-risk people, that 93% of your people with moderate risk either maintain or improve their risk, which is a very positive thing. The only way you're really going to beat this healthcare trend is by reducing the dependency on the healthcare system in the future. So, I could have shown you this slide and you could have had green boxes everywhere and you've spent less money, but what we could have found is that they haven't used healthcare and they're not taking care of themselves. So, that means in future years, you're going to have larger claims, sicker people, people that can't work effectively. So, instead, what we're seeing is you're doing a much better job controlling the risk. Now, we wanted to look at, and the research that we do, many, many reports that we generate, but we want to focus on a few. So, now we want to know, is the onsite clinic doing any better or is your population just doing better? So, this analysis again is looking at those rub buckets, the resource utilization bands. And if I look at your clinic participants, which is your second to bottom line, if you look at your moderate-risk category, and I want -- I'm looking at the clinic people because I want you to see this number. This is the best results we have seen in the country and I get chills when I present this. Because you see there's about a, what, I can't do the quick math, like $3,500 improvement. They're almost half of the cost. So, that would be, I mean, if you could pay half of the amount for people and take better care of them, that is absolutely, in the healthcare world, nirvana. And right now, it looks like they're really doing something very special. And I like to see the sweet smiles because I know you guys work hard to get this. So, you deserve that. Quite remarkable results with 56% of your people engaged. Then what we look at is, again, great, they're spending half the money. Is it because everyone's on cheap drugs and they're not doing the right thing and that's why we have cost efficiency? But then when we look at the impact, and this is that risk migration again, but what we're looking at are just our moderate and very high and high-risk individuals. So, we're comparing those that are engaged in the clinic versus not engaged in the clinic. And what you see is 86% of the moderate-risk people either improved or maintained their risk compared to 82% of those that did not use the clinic. So, big cost difference and yet they've done a better job controlling risk. And then when we look at the high to very high risk, so those are, if I could just go back, think about the cost difference. So, if someone is moderate risk and doesn't maintain or control their risk, they move to high risk. So, the jump in cost here is almost, what, $18,000. So, it's a big deal to keep people moderate risk. It makes a huge impact on your financial, your fiscal responsibility. And then as we look at the very high risk also, those are the very high-risk cases and it's only those that improve that get credit in risk migration. And they have shown improvement in 72% of the high to very high-risk people that have engaged in the clinic versus 67% in the rest of the people that did not engage. So, better outcomes at a much more cost-effective price. So, again, I want to take a step back and when we say better outcomes, rub migration is one way, but we also look a lot at chronic condition and improvements in chronic condition. So, there are some specific things I want to draw your attention to and that is prediabetes, diabetes, obesity, and blood pressure control. So, starting in the upper left-hand corner, if I look at how well-controlled your people are with their A1C, so diabetics, it looks like everyone's shaking their head that you're comfortable. A1C is the average blood sugar level for a three-month period. It is really an indicator of how well an individual is controlling their blood sugar. So, a controlled diabetic needs to stay below 7% A1C value. So, in our analysis, Carmel Clay Schools has 78% of your population with a controlled A1C that compares to 59% of benchmark. Much better control of your population. Where I get excited, because I've been involved with the ADA for a long time, is we also like to look at the prediabetics because type 2 diabetes correlates with obesity, which correlates with prediabetes and prediabetes convert to diabetes at the rate of about 9% per year. In this population, you did not have any prediabetics from 2017 convert to diabetes in 2018 to date. So, that's really phenomenal. And 29% of the individuals that were prediabetic actually improved their A1C levels, so they are no longer prediabetic. Big improvements. We go down to obesity levels and what we see is that 11% of your population had a BMI greater than 30. So, in the obese or morbidly obese category, 11% of those people actually improved their weight so much that they changed to the lower BMI category. That's very hard to come by. Most of the time, we drill down to 5% to 7% weight loss because you really don't see people move BMI category. So, that's quite significant. And then blood pressure, of course, is very significant because a cardiovascular accident costs on average $450,000 per incidence. So, what we see is blood pressure control for Carmel Clay Schools at 76%, just slightly higher than our benchmark at 74%. And I bet you now that they're going to be motivated to get the rest of that down knowing the way these guys seem to function. But what we did see is 76% of the population that had a blood pressure in the hypertensive category in 2017 already improved to being non-hypertensive in 2018. So, those are very quick movements of biometric risk. Then lastly, I just want to share with you, what we typically see in onsite clinics, which is a concern of ours, is that onsite clinics are usually evaluated by engagement. And that usually means a lot of onsite clinics give away free drugs. So, in order to get people to give them high scores on evaluation, satisfaction surveys, they give them free drugs and it's a quick fix and it keeps people coming back so their engagement scores look high. And we usually see significant concerns with polypharmacy when we look at onsite clinics. In this situation, if you look at Carmel Clay Schools compared to the, our benchmark data, you're running, your active ingredient count is a polypharmacy marker from Johns Hopkins. So, it's not number of pills, but number of active ingredients because new drugs can have two active ingredients in one pill. You're running at 6% polypharmacy, which our benchmark is at 10%. So, that is very significantly below probably one of the lowest we have seen. I should have actually checked that. You may be best in class in that. If you look at ER utilization, you're running better than benchmark and no generalist seen is significantly better than benchmark at 23% compared to 34. And risk, which is future risk, is prospective risk, is better than benchmark. So, your dependence on the healthcare system is better than benchmark. Now, when we look at those that participate in the clinic versus those that did not, what is most surprising to us is that that polypharmacy rate is lowest for those that are going to the clinic and yet the clinic are seeing people with higher risk. So, you always want your people with higher risk to use your clinic because the whole idea is that it's better coordinated care. So, they're getting the higher-risk people engaged and they're improving their risk but with less medications. So, that is a real different story there. And as you can see, their ER utilization has declined over time. So, if you can't tell in my voice and presentation, I'm incredibly impressed and I feel very grateful to have been able to do this evaluation. So, on that note, I am going to turn it over to St. Vincent's so Cheryl can go further with their program. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for allowing us to be here. I want to thank you all for choosing St. Vincent as a partner. I'm Cheryl Harmon. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for St. Vincent for the State of Indiana, which is sponsored by Ascension Healthcare, which is national and the largest Catholic healthcare company in the world. So, we are honored though to be involved in this particular program. This for us, is it this? Are you using a computer? Okay. This program for us really represents innovation that we believe is the future of healthcare. Healthcare is being disrupted right now from the inside and the outside. And so, we want to be a part of that because part of our mission is how do we deliver compassionate, personalized healthcare at the right place, the right time, and deliver the right care? And this is really a model that I believe works in all those directions. Right time and right place because it's at the place where people work. It's at the place where they spend most of their day. And right level of care because it keeps people out of the acute care centers and it keeps them well. And the other thing this does is it offers people the tools to actually be in charge and control their own health, to own their health, to own their wellness. And that for us at St. Vincent's is really how do we create that shift? How do we provide acute care to those people who really need it? But how do we keep people well? How do we help employers, Carmel Clay Schools, decrease your healthcare costs? And so, this has been a real privilege for us to be involved in it. We, as our sponsor organization says, we need to be innovating on the front edge of this because we need to be part of this solution. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Prosser, who is actually going to spend some time talking to you about all the different components of this. And one other comment that I'd make is to thank you for the partnership because any of these innovations require a partnership. You can't do it one-sided. We've got some of those pilots going where we're out there trying to create health and wellness, but without you on the other side saying, "Guess what? This is at no cost. This is an incentive to come in and get healthcare." That partnership is really what I believe created the outcomes that we've seen, which are wonderful and we're very, very proud of those. So, Dr. Prosser?
Can you show me what you're pushing?
Yes. Yes, this arrow.
Thank you. So, this slide, it really kind of embodies what we do at the clinic. And really, the most important part of that slide is what's right in the middle, that little circle, the person. We really want to honor each person that comes in, each patient, and we're all there to support that person. So, this gives you a little bit of an idea of what that would look like. The exercise physiologist, physical therapy, behavioral health, Amy is one, then our Pharm D, the primary care physician, which I'm one of those, clinical nurses, registered dietitian, wellness coordinator, and the care navigator. Each of these people, I could spend time talking about each one of them, but we'll kind of go forward and then there'll be some time for questions afterwards if you have some questions. But this gives you a general overview of what we do at the clinic. So, we do a lot of different things. Again, the patient-centered model. So, we do same-day and next-day visits. We do preventative care. We manage chronic diseases. There's a lot of different things that people need. Our biggest passion though, and I'm so glad to hear that these analytics are kind of proving out that this is bearing out to be a good thing, is to help people to adopt healthy changes and then maintain them, not just, you know, think they want to go on a diet and maybe they'll last for three months and not maintain it. And we're starting to see that it's really impacting their health, kind of like we thought that it would. And it is a team approach like the prior slide. There's not one person that can be responsible for that. It's all of us working together. And so, we do a lot of screening and education on some of the, some of the big disease causers like smoking, diabetes. We encourage people with weight loss, try to identify sleep apnea, skin cancer screening. That's one of the things that we started to implement with skin cancer screenings. We have some area dermatologists who've been very kind to donate their time and we've found multiple melanomas over the years and they were found early and so they've not had to undergo extensive surgeries and chemotherapy. Stress management has been very big, nutritional education consultation. So, there's a lot of things. I won't read everything, but there's a lot going on and, and, I'm so young. Let's go to the next slide. Hours of operation. We do have some expanded hours so that we're there early in the morning on Sundays and then we're there later in the day on other days. And again, this goes over kind of the staffing that we have there, the primary care physician. It was interesting to find that even though patients had insurance, there was a lot of patients that didn't see their primary care physician or if they had a primary care physician, they really weren't opening up about what their needs were. Sometimes they didn't know what their needs were and we were able to spend time with them to identify things that were very impactful for their health in the long run. So, this just lists some of the benefits that we would have, we would find with a nearsite or onsite health, healthcare clinic. And so, it's the improved access to care, trying to connect people with a primary care physician. If they are using us for their primary care, we really try to encourage them to have an outside primary care physician as well, especially if they have a lot of chronic conditions. And then we try to get them to good specialists so that they get good care that way. A real key point here though is not only the convenient appointments with the doctor, but that we're spending extra time with patients. It takes a while for people to figure out what their needs are. It takes us a while to figure out what their needs are. And sometimes when people come in, we might think they're coming in for one thing and they really have some other things that really need to be addressed. And so, when we have the extra time to spend, we're able to identify that. The other thing is with our, with our staff, our amazing staff that we have there, we all get to know one another and it's that relationship building and building of trust that I think is really cornerstone to this, to this clinic. And I think it's made a lot of the impact that the analytics are bearing out. And also, we are strong believers in making, helping people find changes in lifestyle, to adopt healthy lifestyle and to maintain healthy lifestyle and so, anyway. And so, it provides perfect venue for management of chronic medical conditions, trying to get people to the right specialists, and then also us managing those medical conditions in a way that doesn't overlap their care. It's, I can't think of the right word. Pardon me?
Complimentary.
Yes, it's complimentary. It's, so we're not repeating tests. We're making sure that we have all the data from their specialists and making sure that other specialists have their consult notes from other specialists. So, there's a lot of care coordination that goes on and that helps to reduce waste and improves care. There's, you know, we don't just refer to St. Vincent. We have a lot of patients that go to community, they go to IU, they're at St. Vincent, they might be on the south side and we do have some people that live down there. And we make a big effort to make sure that we're getting all the information from all the different specialists and then helping them to manage their own condition. So, and again, at the bottom line, a holistic approach. It's really, it's just, it's the practice of lifestyle medicine. It's helping people to, to adopt healthy lifestyle and it's evidence-based medicine. You know, we're not, we're not prescribing coconut oil to everybody. I hope I didn't offend everybody or anybody, but we really are looking at, you know, what's evidence-based medicine and providing prevention. So, and then we will lower cost as you, as you have seen. It's reduced emergency room and urgent care utilization. People will wait and then once we develop a relationship with people, they really want to know our opinion about what they should be doing next. You know, do I really need to go to the ER or do I, you know, can I just come in there and see you? And that's where people like Kathy are, are in, will triage the calls and help to, help them to make that decision. Appropriate referrals, making sure they get to the right specialists, and fewer and shorter hospital stays, and really trying to address those chronic conditions earlier, not only addressing them, but also through lifestyle changes, reversing them. And we've had some really nice success stories with that. And so, I think that might be the last slide. Yep, thank you. So, we're opening up for questions.
Well, as a board, we want to extend our gratitude and we are very thankful that you have partnered with us as well because employee wellness. I served on the insurance committee long, long ago when we used to have one and Richard had really tried to encourage us to find a way to have a wellness center. And I'm, we're very thrilled that we were able to figure out how to make that happen for our employees. The numbers look fabulous. had really tried to encourage us to find a way to have a wellness center. And I'm, we're very thrilled that we were able to figure out how to make that happen for our employees. The numbers look fabulous. And so, big thank you to Cheryl and Mary, Richard, Dr. Prosser, and everybody else who's here that we've had an opportunity to meet. I know our board has lots of questions. I'll let them ask before I dive deep into my questions. So, who, Mike?
Well, I guess to start out with, as a spouse of an employee, I have the privilege of being able to use the Wellness Clinic. And with that, I want to first of all, thank the district for that benefit that is unbelievable and we probably do not do a good enough job telling our employees how great it is and how well they can use it. So, first, I want to thank the district. Second, I want to thank Roger. Third, I want to thank St. Vincent's. And fourth, I really want to thank the people that are there every day. When I go in, I'm always greeted with a smile. When I make a phone call, it's always, "How can we help you?" I mean, and this is comparing it to a doctor's office. It's just unbelievable. And I am one of those that I don't have a primary care physician, probably because the care I get there is so great that I don't want to go to anybody else. I do have one question and I think this is probably for Mary. What does P E P M stand for?
I knew what the questions would be for me because I hope that...
It means per employee per month, so it's the ability to just standardize all the dollars.
Thank you. So, I guess I will give one kind of tongue-in-cheek complaint and it's not really a complaint. The fitness classes are awesome. I just wish they were more on my schedule and I understand around the teacher's schedule and not on schedule for someone that works downtown. So, you know, that six o'clock class on Saturday morning when I was the only one going, I understand that. My second is really just how we expand the program to continue all the great things that we're doing. And I just know from where I work, there is a benefit that we've added called like MD-800, which is telemedicine to cover when you guys are not there. And my guess is St. Vincent's or Ascension has something similar because, you know, we're saving money when the clinic's open, but when the clinic's not open, to get someone to say, "You can wait till the morning or go to the ER." And then, I just also want to say, I think it's amazing that we've had six years with no premium increase, recognizing that we've just had one now, but compared to the cost that, where I work, where I'm an owner, I mean, and the fact that benefits haven't changed is just amazing. So, thank you.
Yes, I want to...
I just want to say thank you very much again. I remember the days when our insurance costs just kept going up. And when I was a teacher, one year, our insurance cost went up 25% and that really hit the teachers terribly. And I've worked with Richard Sutton many times when we were negotiating. So, I just think that this is a wonderful program. I remember when my husband used to go because he has health issues and he always came home and he was so complimentary. It took me a while to get him to go there, but he came home and he was so complimentary of the physician and how thoughtful the physician was and how that person took time to talk to him and find out what was going on with him. And he just really enjoyed going there and just didn't want to go anyplace else. But I have a couple of questions to go along with that. Do you make hospital visits once somebody goes into the hospital and to follow up on patients or is that just the specialist?
So, we don't go and see them in the hospital. What we do do is get their medical record when they come out. And so, we're notified when they get out of the hospital and then we contact the patient to make sure that, do they understand what the follow-up is? Do they know who they're supposed to be seeing? Part of that's the care navigation. Kathy Lowe is the RN that was there from the beginning of the clinic and also does care navigating, is oftentimes the first smiling face that you see when you walk through the clinic.
Okay, so you do follow-ups on anybody who's possibly been in the hospital that you're taking care of?
Yeah, we're reaching out to them. They might not always reach out to us, but if we find out they're in the hospital, then we reach out to them.
And how long, if you have to refer to a specialist, how long does it take somebody to get into a specialist when you refer them? I mean, on average?
Yeah, that's a great question. And it varies from what kind of specialist it is. Some specialists, it's very, very difficult to get in. Some specialists, you can get people in quickly and it depends on why they're coming in. And so, if we have somebody that maybe is going to have a screening test, like a screening colonoscopy, it may take them a few months to get in because it's screening. If it's something that we think that they need to get seen right away for, we've been able to get people in as quick as same-day or next-day if it's really needed. So, we really push if we really think there's an urgency that's there. So, it's a little difficult to answer because of that, because of that variability.
But I like the fact that, you know, there's opportunity to get them in same-day if it's a...
Absolutely.
So, I like the fact that they like your referrals, is what I'm saying, that when you refer, it means something.
They know, yeah.
Yeah. Also, I was wondering, have we put in an x-ray area or anything so that we don't have to send people to get x-rays or are we going to think about doing something like that?
We don't have an x-ray onsite. We've got a lot of locations that are close by, so Northwest Radiology, there's a relationship with them. So, but we don't have an onsite radiology.
Okay, so, okay. I think those were my questions. Thank you.
Katie?
Okay, I'm going to go, I'm going to rewind all the way back to the beginning. So, for those people who are watching and they're like, "What are they all talking about? Could you give us like, you know, me like a 15-second? What is the clinic? Who gets to go? Why do they go there?" Yes, thank you.
All right. So, the Carmel Clay Employee Wellness Center is for the Carmel Clay employees who carry health insurance through the Carmel Clay School System. And it's an onsite or near-site clinic that provides primary care services, not only for acute care or chronic disease management, but we're heavily focused on prevention and heavily focused on helping patients find lifestyle changes that are going to support their well-being and their, for health.
And is it for the whole family or just employees?
Whole family, yep. Kids and adults.
Thank you, that's what I wanted. Thanks.
Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn. I wanted to thank Roger and then everybody involved here in establishing the partnership and offering this excellent program to our employees. I do have a couple of questions here. So, piggyback on what Katie asked you, is this Wellness Center an option to our employees or it's included in the healthcare insurance, in the health insurance?
I tried to take a shot at that. So, we have about 1,250 employees that are covered under our health program. And then, their dependents bring that number up to about 2,500, 2,200. And of those, about, we're getting over 50% now that utilize the Wellness Center. Our goal, of course, is we want that to go up. And so, we will tell our employees that this is a choice if you're covered under the program, so you are dependents if they're covered. All the services that you've heard tonight, they're not free, but they're at no cost to the employee. And so, of course, there's a cost underlying that, but there's not a cost to the employee. It's a part of their benefit really of being covered under our health plan. And so, and any cost that we talk about, the cost of this Wellness Center is a part of that cost. So, it's not like an add-on or something. It's included in the cost. And so, to the employee, what we will tell them is, is the difference between any of the services here and services elsewhere is this is just at no cost to you. So, it's completely a choice. You don't have to give up anything. In fact, we, as was mentioned, we would encourage people not to give up their primary care physician because we're not, that's not what we are. We're not 24 hours a day. We don't have answering services and so forth. And so, but it certainly is a complement to that. And as Mike indicated, and our family's the same way, we have, you know, a primary care physician, but we just don't utilize them. But if we had an emergency situation, they would, you know, still be there. So, it's an additional service to the employee and this service, in addition to being no cost, again, we don't really emphasize the money part of this. But I will tell you that since 2013, if our premiums had gone up, that average cost, actually, I calculated based on less than that seven and a half percent, based on the three years prior to having the Wellness Center, we're looking at about $11 million and at the rate of about $1.8 million per year. You have to understand that our healthcare costs are about $18 million a year. So, it's a lot of money, but it's in the context of a very big picture. But the most important part is, is we're affecting people's lives.
Yes.
Could you expound just a minute on the stress management, behavioral health? Because I know that our teachers and staff are not stressed at all. This is a very low-stress job. So, could you just kind of expound on that for a second?
Yeah. Perfect timing.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
We want to introduce everybody that's here anyhow, so we're going to get it done here.
So, I'm Amy Adamsky. I am one of the behavioral health counselors. So, I've been there, I guess, about two and a half years and the response has just been tremendous. I see families, I see kids, I've done marital, I have an addiction background, so I can address those kinds of issues. Very busy. So, that's Roger mentioned, we even had to bring in a second counselor just to supplement some of those services, especially busy after-school hours. So, having her and we kind of have flexed our schedules to meet the needs of the teachers and the families. And just, it's been a really tremendous place to work and we work real well together. So, Dr. Prosser may be prescribing a medication for antidepressant or something. She doesn't have the time to monitor those people's progress or what their needs are. They can see me, we can kind of monitor that together. I can consult with her and decide if she needs to see them again and it just works real well.
Yes, going along with what you just said, with the stress management, it sounds like your hours are different than the hours that are on the sheet?
No, it's the same, but the two counselors and I, we have a little bit of varying hours. We make sure there's two of us for the after-school times just because that's our busiest time. So, we do have times during, I think we're there three days a week now and we flex that on need. So, if there is somebody that needs after-school, we can usually fit them in between the two of us. But I am there also during the mornings too for some folks who want to come over or spouses who don't have that rigid of a schedule. Also, see students that parents may work and maybe at the high school students. I have several who come over on their breaks or their lunch, bring their lunch, come meet with me, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, and I can give them a pass back to school. So, that happens often. I've even had parents call who say, "Hey, I just got a call from my kid," who I probably have been seeing, who's having a hard time. Can you fit them in today? And we have enough openings and flexibility in the schedule, I can usually see somebody pretty quickly within a day or two.
Well, I like the fact that you're very flexible and you work these people in and that you're right across the street from the high school.
It works real well.
That helps a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, we failed to mention, but in terms of access, the employees also, they can go, in fact, we encourage them to go during work, during the daytime. And so, they go, it's fine that they're still on the clock and say if they're hourly employees, but we just want them to go. And they do. And as you mentioned, about a third of our employees live across the street or work across the street. And so, that's pretty convenient to, you know, just walk across the street.
That's why they need stress management.
Well, on the stress, what we found, and Mary didn't indicate it with the analytics, but as you know, I think, the stress level across the entire country is extremely high and then ours is up here. So, that may not be surprising in a community, you know, a high expectation community like Carmel, but it's very high and we certainly saw some reflection of that once we added the mental health component. And by the way, we have the same issue with our students, as you know. So, it's something that's very critical that we address.
Sorry, this just came up. Do you have suicide prevention services through what you do?
Absolutely, yes, certainly I could assess that. And we've had a few occasions where if somebody might need more than individual counseling, I can refer them directly, get them right over to the stress centers typically who we use. There's also Community North has a psychiatric program. So, I could certainly, well-equipped to do that assessment and get them connected with services immediately.
Okay, thank you.
So, Roger explained that this service is at no cost to our employees and about half of our employees utilize the Wellness Center?
Well, about half of the covered lives. So, that would be half of both our employees and the dependents.
Okay, so, earlier in the analytics, Mary compared clinic participants versus non-participants. Are these non-participants in the district or outside the district?
Those are your employees or covered lives that are not using the center?
Okay, so you are comparing just all...
All within Carmel Clay.
Okay. And my last question here is, how long is our contract with them for the Wellness Center?
I don't even remember. I think we started with either three or five years. We've had such a successful relationship, I've had no reason to go back and look at it frankly, but I believe it was five years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
So, can we real quickly, for the other people that are part of the bigger team who have not had the opportunity to be introduced, would you mind just standing and kind of talking very briefly about your function, what you do for the clinic?
I'm Kathy Lowe. I'm the nurse and I'm also the care navigator, which is a relatively new kind of title. But what I do is, in addition to being kind of the first person you see when you come to the clinic and I do the triage on the phone for folks. And now, if somebody is getting out of the hospital and we get that information, I contact them to make sure they have follow-up, whether it's with the specialist or with us. Newly diagnosed diabetics or hypertensive patients, I follow up with them. Usually, Dr. Prosser and I will come up with a plan, you know, contact them every two weeks or making sure they're getting back in, doing what they're supposed to. And I kind of have an advantage. I'm a little older, so I've been kind of, and I know all of them. I've been there since we started, which really helps because I can kind of nudge them or, you know, badge them a bit if they need it and they take it, you know, in stride. But it kind of helps to get people back in and doing what they're supposed to do. And if they have questions or if something comes up, they know they can call me. Sometimes I may just stop in if they need to and that's fine too. So, that's kind of what I do.
Yeah, thank you. And if we can continue, Dr. Busk, could you just real quickly introduce yourself and let's just keep going there? Thank you.
Very quickly, I'm Dr. Michael Busk, Assistant Executive of our St. Vincent's Health Wellness and Care Institute, which the worksite centers are under at our institute. And as Cheryl Harmon, our Chief Operating Counselor, said, we are very dedicated to working directly with employers. For the goals and our mission is to improve the care, improve the quality of care, improve the health of the employees and their families, and more than anything else, improve their quality of life. We find that when we bring that combination together by working not only from the medical side, but like the holistic approach that you see with all the services we provide, especially the services that help people to improve their lifestyle. And in that way, we also see the combination of now healthcare costs for the kids. And I will get it, especially, we love working with schools because you look at 60% of the community. The teachers are learning from all these tremendous professionals here, they can bring it to the students. And then, we have a healthier city of Carmel. So, I will...
It is important to not forget the hopeful trickle-down effect. You know, we're affecting employees, but let's not forget about the kids and the students because that's certainly a big goal here.
Yeah. And I did want to mention too, that we couldn't do what we do. Dr. Busk, of course, he's the big kahuna over this whole wellness initiative or institute, but we wouldn't be able to do what we do without the wellness culture that's being developed by Roger. And, you know, you can't, you can't make these lifestyle changes in a vacuum.
I mean, when you've got a community and workforce and workplace that support that, it, it makes all the difference, it really does. And so I, I really think, you know, we, we focus on teamwork, you know, Kathy and Amy and, you know, all of us work together as a team, and, and it's, it's the same with, with the school system. I can't say enough how grateful I am. And, and then I also wanted to introduce one of our patients, testimonial.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I am one of the patients, and I think I'm, was invited here to say that everything that they've said and all your numbers are interesting, and what they've said is, is true. Like member Kirshner, I've had the opportunity to use the clinic several times. My wife taught here at Clay Junior High, Clay Middle School, for 36 years. She made me write out what I was going to say, so I don't ramble. So I go back on script. My name's David Abel, live here in Carmel, practice law here in Carmel. My connection to Carmel-Clay Schools and the Group Health Plan and the Wellness Center is through my wife, who taught it, like I said, at Clay Middle School for, social studies there for 36 years. We've been covered under the Group Health Plan since 1976. Still covered, covered under the Group Health Plan. She retired, but under your early retirement option, we still have the benefit of the program, which has been fantastic. As a covered individual in that group plan, I have access to the Wellness Center, had been there several times. I understand from some of the comments earlier that maybe Dr. Prosser is not supposed to be my primary care physician, but I think she's kind of turned into that based on my trips the last two or three years. I like hearing the comments and seeing, you know, they're patient-centered, they're caring. That's one of the things I've written down here, without wasting my time or their time, they just seem to take a few extra minutes to find out what's going on, and, and are able to address other issues. I have a couple of examples of that. Probably for 20 years or so, I didn't really see any doctors, except at the urgent, urgent care centers, is what they're called. Nothing serious. Three or four years ago, I had a skin rash that I, on my arm, that I couldn't shake. Since I hadn't really kept up with my primary care doctor, I looked for an option where I could get in rather quickly, could get into the Wellness Center within a day. Got in for the skin rash, minor condition, no issue, prescription cream took care of that. But Dr. Prosser took the time, as they, as the slides indicated, asked some more questions. And I'd been suffering from heartburn for a number of years, and so we got to the bottom of that, ended up with endoscopy. I joke and say, I went in for a skin rash, came out with an endoscopy, but solved my heartburn problem with some medication, and that was great. I can eat what I want now. Saw Dr. Prosser again a year or two later to follow up on the prescription, I think Bryolosec, or some fancy name for it, but what you read online is, long-term use of some medications causes issues. So I wanted to follow up and say what's going on. She took the time to explain to me the advantages, disadvantages, I'm still taking the medicine. But after those questions were resolved, she took a little bit of extra time to ask, at my age, you know, what, what's, when's the last time you had a physical? When's, she asked a few questions about my general health status. That led to a routine physical. No, no issues, I was feeling fine, but hadn't had a physical since I was probably 40-ish, I'm 65 now. So she, we, we went through the physical, the routine testing. Routine testing, discovered blockages in probably three, I think I had four blockages in three coronary arteries, led to quadruple bypass. Again, no symptoms before, no symptoms after. Still not sure whether I really needed the bypass surgery, but, but it's something that could have saved my life. So it was a win-win. Might have skewed your dollar numbers a little bit with the bypass surgery, but what I like about the Wellness Center is, they do take that extra few minutes, not all day, they don't take up all my time, I don't take up all their time, but they get to the bottom of what's going on with your, with your health. Great place, all the people there, Dr. Prosser, Kathy, you, you walk in the place, service is great. Back to, let me back up for just a second. They know how to get to your health history without trying, without, I mean, it's kind of a casual conversation, I don't even know I'm disclosing things that are important, but the conversation is, well, okay, you need to do this, you need to do this. So it's a very conversational, very comfortable way. So it's a good program, good staff, I don't know if it's that way at every Wellness Center, but this one is that way. Service is great, usually no trouble getting an appointment, depending on how urgent the need is. I haven't really had the urgent need, oddly enough, except for that skin rash. Always hated going to doctors' offices where you have, or dentist's office, maybe dentist or more, but where you have to wait. You go in, you wait 30, 35 minutes to get to see the medical professional. Never had that issue at the Wellness Center. About the time you go in, check in, sit down, pull out your phone to check your email, they call you back, so it's, it's almost that quick. I always wondered why some people thought their time was more important than mine. It's not the way at the Wellness Center. They get you in, get you taken care of, they recognize that my time's as important as theirs, so I, I like that about it. Really can't say enough good things about the way I've been treated at the Wellness Center, and who I've been referred to. Had good care, once referred out of the Wellness Center, but I'd go to the Wellness, I'd keep them as my primary care physician, even though I know I'm not supposed to have done that, and I know I can't after we're off of the plan, but I would, I would stay with them as long as I could. So, nothing but good things to say about it, and it's a great benefit, and wish I'd known about it sooner. More employees ought to take advantage of it. Thanks for the opportunity, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony, and, and we are so excited. Do we have any specific questions for Mr. Abel?
Thank you. I do have a couple questions myself. First, how many patients are we able to see a day? And do we have a need that we need to increase staffing? Or how, how fluid are we with our staffing? How does that work?
Right now, if there's one physician in, they're probably seeing, I don't know, anywhere up to 18, but that's really pushing it. Oh, you have, okay. So if we have one physician in, they can see up to 18, but that's really pushing it. And that would be mainly during cold and flu season. When there are two physicians, we'll, oh, 23 to 25 at most. And again, it depends on who's coming in for physicals, that type of thing. Sick visits are 20 minutes, so we can usually move them through pretty quickly, so.
Do you provide flu shots, pneumonia shots?
We do.
All of our vaccinations and what have you?
School-age vaccines, we provide. We have flu clinics that we'll go to each of the schools for the employees, then we have two flu clinics that are open to anybody who is on the benefits, whether or not they use the Wellness Center. They can come in for the flu clinics. And then we'll give a lot to the folks when they're in for their visits, if they haven't had them. Pneumonia vaccines, the only things we don't carry are the hepatitis vaccines.
We've been talking a lot about the holistic approach, which I know we're extremely happy that, I guess, employee wellness is really our focus, the well-being of, you know, if they feel good, then they can help our students feel good as well. So thank you for that. Are there other areas that we need to be addressing or helping to, to support you or support the administration as a board? Are there, is there more we can be doing to be supportive?
You know, from my, from my perspective, just very, very quickly, I just want to make sure everybody keeps in mind that the more money that you put towards the clinic, is less claims going to your medical plan. And I think as you've seen with the evidence that presented this evening, the return on investment here is big. I know that's not the goal. Roger reminds all of us all the time to keep our, our mind on wellness, that don't worry about the return on investment, don't worry about the money, it'll come if we keep people healthier. And that is absolutely the truth. So the only thing I would say is, when it does come to that day and that time, when we need more resources, more providers, more hours, keep in mind that dollars put that direction reduces what's going to your health plan, and the ultimate savings will occur. So, but I can't think of anything, staff members, is there anything immediate that you think the board needs to be attentive to?
I would just, I would just add, I think your comments are spot-on, but I would just add that your continued support for the collaboration, because I think every year as we go through this, and Dr. Busk and I talk about this a lot, it's looking at what the clinic is doing, how they're operating, who they're seeing, what the needs are, and identifying those areas that maybe we're not covering that we need to cover in the future to expand the services. So I think that continuing dialogue, Michael mentioned, you know, do you have after-hours care? Yes. It's something that we haven't addressed aggressively, but we do have St. Vincent on Demand, so I think it's just that continued dialogue, continued what meets your needs. And I think that's the beauty of these kinds of things and this innovation, is that it's really not a turnkey, it's what meets your needs, and, and what do we provide to continue to keep your population healthy and getting healthier.
Thank you. And I have another question. This is probably more for Mary. Mary, how do you define your, what was it, high-risk versus very-high-risk? What type of health conditions fit into those categories?
So that is a Johns Hopkins term, and it's not just a health condition. It has to do with the severity of the disease, the likelihood that that disease can be high burden, and then how well that person is managing their disease. So that's why someone could have a very high burdensome disease, but if they're well-managed, they can move down to a lower-risk category. And if I could, I just add to your other question, the one thing that we did see in your data that I did not show up here that Roger mentioned, was that stress and anxiety is a big deal in your population, more so than in others, which it's a big deal across the country. I don't think anyone knows the answer to that, but that may be something that is, hopefully other programs are put out that we see impact on, that, that would be something that could really benefit your people.
Couple of things we're doing with regard to that, that again, aren't obvious necessarily, but this past year, we have expanded our, again, what appears to be our fitness classes, but we're now offering and encouraging participation in what really are social well-being initiatives, various runs, for example, for charity, there were things, you know, Coleman Run, and, and also our own Ghost and Goblins, but, or the foundations, but, but other kinds of charitable things, and, and we pay half the entry fee. And we, today, I just got my nice shirt, that, that the logo was designed by the Carmel High School Art Department, and I should have brought it with me, but it's, it's very nice. So, so we're subtly involving people in things like that, because, you know, we know that when you help somebody else, that helps you. So that's, that's one example. We're, we, we're starting up, not basketball leagues, but opportunities for like pickup basketball at two of our schools, because we know that, that type of interaction with, with other employees and coworkers, and, and also employees that you might otherwise not really come in contact with. So, so those are really underlying things that are, that are, looks like basketball, but for us, it's, it's a part of that well-being effort. And the whole, the whole thing, the way I would describe it is, is if somebody goes to the Wellness Center, they may start with the doctor, who, want to mention it, but they may end up seeing the behavioral health person, who might encourage them to take a yoga class, like my wife did me. Saturday morning, Mike, at 9 o'clock. So, but really, all of that's, you see, it's all tied in, and they're there together. Same with the physical therapy, they go to physical therapy, and the therapist will say, you know, if you had better flexibility, you may not need to see me, and so you might try this yoga class, or, or whatever it is. So they're all working together for that patient, and, which is one reason why we wanted onsite physical therapy. We had very good physical therapy offsite, but one, we wanted it onsite, and this is what we call hospital physical therapy, and so there's, there is a difference between that and, and the, some others, alternatives. But part of it being physically located, everybody, everybody can talk to everybody, and not just through email and over the phone. So, and I would say that upcoming, this, we've now been doing this long enough, that this year, we're really going to move to try to really promote what we're doing. One, we're going to promote it internally, because we do want, we want, we want everybody to go to Wellness Center. And so we're going to really, we've been promoting it, but, but it's incredibly difficult with 15 different sites and 2,200 employees, and they work different shifts and so forth. But, and as Mike mentioned, you know, the hours, they're, whatever the hours are, they're not good for somebody. So we're going to promote it internally, but also, excuse me, externally. We really would like to help people, period. We don't care if they live in Carmel, or Carmel Schools, or where they're at. So Richard and I will be attending a, what do you call it, Richard, a World?
World Congress of...
Congress of...
Yep.
In Phoenix.
Arizona.
Arizona, to share some of this with that group. I'm going to continue to talk to some of our other local governmental entities, because, you know, we share gas pumps, but we don't share this Wellness Center. And so, so we're going to look to reach out and see if we can expand what we're doing. We also think, you know, that, that will help Carmel-Clay Schools as well. We know that Steve Stefanoff is certainly using this as a recruiting tool. You know, as, as we know, educators aren't, aren't getting huge raises these, this, these days, but we can offer something like this. And, and our employees tell us that this, this is really important. I can tell you, with the investment that we've made in here, we've made a lot more employees happy than the investment when we, when we provide the salary increases that we provide. So, so it's money very well spent.
Well, I just want to reiterate that I have a number of friends who utilize the Wellness Center, and I absolutely believe it helps us to promote our school district as a destination workplace for any one of our, you know, either a professional educator or any staff. That's what we would hope, that we are able to offer a variety of benefits that just, you know, support their growth. So that's fabulous, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, please.
I just want to say, and like, we kind of alluded to it, but as a parent with children in the district, I want the people who spend as much time with my kids as I do to be healthy and happy. And so I'm so thankful, like, as a, you know, a general thank you to, to you guys, and to you and your team for making this important. As a parent, I say thank you.
Yeah, and before I forget, I want to recognize Lori DeGraff back there. She's sitting quietly in the back, but she, she's, from the school district's perspective, she, she really, when we first started with the phedometer program, I mean, she did all the work. I just had the ideas, and then they figured it out. So I'd really want to recognize Lori for her efforts.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. On behalf of all of us, thank you for letting us present and be part of this success. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just pause here. Well, we are ready to begin. Roger, back to you. Budget.
All right. We're good. All right. Well, this won't be near as much fun as the first presentation, but I appreciate the big audience that we have here. Well, let me begin by saying that what's going on in school accounting right now is major changes, the likes that I've certainly not seen in my career. These are huge changes with the chart of accounts. I'd point out, you know, the chart of accounts started in 1909, as near as I can see. And so, there's been some changes since 1909, but that's when the Board of Accounts was established, and they were charged with setting up a chart of accounts for schools. And since then, there's been some changes. In '79, Transportation Fund was created, and 2001, Bus Replacement Fund was created, but nothing like what's happening now. But I'd also emphasize that this is a significant change in accounting, but it's not about getting more money. You know, our expenses haven't particularly changed, and the money that we're getting hasn't particularly changed. So, you know, basically, we're getting, we spend all we get, and we make the best use of it that we can. But this is not a presentation about huge positive news about receiving more, unfortunately, about receiving more money for schools. And so, but before I begin here, too, I also want to recognize Cara Colrose, our accounting supervisor. I thought she might be here this evening, because she's worked all day, or, you know, all day and half the night. But she is our accountant. There are a huge amount of changes behind the scenes in terms of the bookkeeping aspect, so much so that when this legislation was passed in 2017, it was not effective to be implemented until 2019, because, you know, the state legislator knew how big of a change this would be for lots of people, lots of governmental entities, State Board of Accounts, and all the schools, certainly all the school districts. So, I appreciate all the help that Cara's done, both with that as well as with this presentation. So, with that, I'll begin. And so, as I said, House and Road Act 1009 was passed during the 2017 legislative session, and it eliminated four of our funds. And you can see here, I used the silo as the image for two reasons. One, we're in Indiana, so you have to have silos. But also, as the board knows, our funding in Indiana is sometimes referred to as a silo accounting, because we have audible funds, and each fund has a purpose. And we've been trained for years and years that this fund can only be used for those purposes, and you certainly cannot co-mingle the funds. And so, now, with this change, we're going to start co-mingling the funds. And so, we've gone from four funds to two. And so, now, going forward, or at least those four have been merged into two. We still have other funds, and they are the Education Fund, and then the Operations Fund. And so, the four now are merged down to these two. There's no change to the Referendum Fund, and there's no change to the Debt Service Fund. So, the Education Fund is really similar in many ways to the current General Fund, except this fund will be used only for student instruction and learning, such things as teacher salaries, principal salaries, spatial programs, supplies, and so forth. And so, any operational expenses, such as custodians, for example, or the business office or the HR office, those will be paid now from the Operations Fund. But with that exception, the Education Fund, in a lot of ways, looks very much like the General Fund. From a funding standpoint, it's exactly the same, or at least it starts out that way, in that the revenue for that still comes, will come from the Education Fund, will continue to come from the state basic grant, which, as you know, is based on enrollment. It's really the same as 2018, not an increase for this year as it does in the past, but it's the same formula. The Operations Fund, on the other hand, basically is a merging of transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, and those General Fund operational expenses, such as the business office, utilities, custodians, and so forth. And so, those will be, the money will come in to the Education Fund, and then there will be a transfer over to the, those expenses will be expensed in the Operation Fund, and then the money to support that will be transferred over. So, with the Operations Fund, the funding really starts, we continue to have a levy, but it starts this year, we'll start with the 2018 maximum levy for transportation, bus replacement, and capital projects. Then, those funds, those maximums will be increased by something called the assessed value growth quotient, or AVGQ. I'm sure most of you know what that means. And so, and I'll explain that in a minute. So, those will be increased, and they'll be really rolled into one fund. It won't continue to be four levies. But to arrive at the new levy, it'll start with the 2018 levies, and then to get to the maximum amount. One change with capital projects, transportation, bus replacement have been maximum levies, but the capital project's been driven by a maximum rate. So, whatever that rate is, is if the assessed value on the property goes up, then that's what increases the funding, because the rate may stay the same, but it's applied to a larger assessed value. So, in the future, it'll all be based on this assessed value growth quotient, and then, of course, revenue will also be the transfer of funds from the Education Fund. So, I don't know why they call it assessed value, maybe just to confuse us, but, because it has nothing to do with assessed value. It's all about non, what's referred to as non-farm income. And it's really an average over a six-year period, it's two years in arrears, but basically, what it's doing is, instead of the increase coming from the increase in property values, it's going to come from the increase in income, which I think is more than coincidental, but that's exactly how the funding works for the, what has been working for the General Fund, and now will work for the Education Fund. Because, as you know, that's based on income tax and sales tax, which indirectly is going to be affected by the income. And so, this now will be based on income as well. I personally think this is an improvement, because a good deal of our expenses are salaries and income as well. And so, with property values, the downside of that is, for us governmental people, it's a very stable income, which this is a polite way of saying, you have to pay your property taxes whether you have a job or not. But the increase in property may not reflect as well as increase in income, in terms of what, you know, the cost of living or growth that's really needed. And also, from the taxpayer's standpoint, it's driven by their, at least, average increased income. So, if their income's going up 4%, and they're paying 4% more, there would seem to be, you know, some relationship to that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, this year, we will start with the maximum levy.
Yeah.
So, moving forward, is the maximum levy for 2019 the base for 2020?
Yes.
And so, it will always continue to grow?
Yes. Well, in this transition, we'll start with 2018 maximum levies. They'll get increased by that growth quotient, which happens to be, this year will be 3.4%. And then, that will, the result of that equation will be the maximum levy for 2019 for Carmel Clay Schools Operational Fund. Then, in 2020, we'll start with that maximum amount for 2019, and whatever the growth quotient is, that'll be the multiplier, and it'll go up by that percentage. And so, the other thing with this is, it's a little more dependable from the school district's perspective than the other approach as well. So, it's really, overall, I would believe that it was a good move.
So, from this point forward, though, we will no longer have any control over how much goes into these funds?
No, you'll have some control. The way it will start is, is that in the Education Fund, the majority of that money will continue to come from the state grant, and that will go in, and then what had been the, I'll say, the operational expenses, and not directly toward the student, such as custodial services, those, starting in 19, will be a part of the Operational Fund. And so, it'll be necessary to make that transfer at least equal to that amount, in order, because, again, we don't have any more money, and so, the expense didn't go away, so you can move the expense over, but if you don't move the money with it, you can see that that's not going to be a very good equation. So, but what you'll also have is, and I think one of the reasons this was changed, it was carried by Tony Cook, as most of you know, was former school superintendent and so forth. And so, one of the things it's giving is more local control, and more, and people will, you'll hear terms like more local control and more flexibility. Now, a concern that I have personally is, with that local control and flexibility also comes responsibility. And so, I know over my career, there've been times where we said, well, we wish we could, you know, use this money for facilities, but we can't. Well, now, we can. And, or, you know, so now, you've got the form of these three funds, capital projects, bus replacement, and CPF, all in one bucket. And so, I've always looked at school finances, you know, what's the money competing for? And so, so now, in the Operational Fund, it's basically competing for those things. You know, do you want more buses? Do you want to spend more money on facilities? And so, again, the money didn't change, so if you have an interest in whichever one of those it is, if you're a parent and want, you know, door-to-door bus service, you'd rather spend more money on transportation. So, it just goes back and forth. And so, the big picture is that this change, going from four funds to two, will give more local control and more flexibility with the money. And depending on our response to that, we'll either look back and think that was a good thing, or in some cases, it may not be so good.
Lynn?
Yes. So, Roger, when you say more local control, so we will move, when we receive the state grant, we will move some of them from the education to operational for things like business office, custodian. Is the transfer decided by a district's discretion, or it's by a formula?
No, it's by.
By ourselves.
Yeah. You'll see in a minute, but it's by board action through a resolution that the board will.
You mean the amount?
Yes, the amount. The amount will come as administration and recommend the amount through, in the form of a resolution, and then, if the board approves that, then the money will be moved. And so, it is, it's a local decision, it's not a state determination as to how much is moved and so forth. That's left to the local school board. And so, and I'll show you a little bit more of that here in a second. So, again, with regard to the Operations Fund, we're basically taking these three maximum levies in 2018, the capital, transportation, bus replacement. Those are added up and then increased for 19, and that, instead of, in those funds, then that will go to support the Operations Fund. And then, in addition to that, we will move expenses that are not directly supporting children, and in our case, that's just over $16.1 million. And those expenses will be moved to the Operations Fund, and our recommendation will be that the money for those expenses will basically follow the expense over to the Operations Fund. Question?
Yes. Down at the bottom, you said that teacher salaries and benefits are paid from the Referendum Fund. Because this is only a seven-year fund, and teachers, we hope, will be continuous, their salary.
Yep.
Is it possible to move teacher salaries up and move things that are not so dependent on year-to-year expenses into the Referendum Fund?
The short answer would be yes, but it wouldn't make any difference in the sense that the new Education Fund, like the old General Fund, and the Referendum Fund are really used for the same purpose. And so, or at least, up until now at least, they could have been used for other purposes. I mean, the General Fund, up until now, you basically use for about anything. And Referendum Fund, you could too, but in our Referendum, when we advertised and asked the taxpayers to support it, we told them specifically, this is what we would be using it for, that we weren't using it to expand administration, or to build buildings, or any of that kind of stuff. But that we were going to use it for, you know, basically instructional expenses, and that's what we're doing. And so, whether it's in the, which is why I combine, for presentation, I combine the General Fund and the Referendum Fund, and now I'll combine the Education Fund and the Referendum Fund, because we have to keep it separate in terms of the accounting, but operationally, it's like one big pot. And so, it wouldn't matter, we could code, till we run out of money, I mean, we could code any expenses we wanted within those instructional expenses to either the Referendum Fund, or the, you know, we could switch them around all we want. This year, for example, we're paying a big chunk of the Referendum money as, we just moved middle school, because it's just a bookkeeping thing, and so, it was a big chunk of expenses, educational expenses. So, you'll see that in a minute, that a big chunk of the Referendum money is paying for middle school, and we could have moved part of elementary or part of, it just happened, that was, it wasn't more than the Referendum Fund, so it was a convenient piece to move. But it really makes no difference.
Well, I was just thinking, because in seven years, or after seven years, that money, unless it is voted on again and replaced, we won't have it.
Right.
So, the General Fund or the Education Fund is more permanent, so that's why I was thinking, you know, not, teacher salaries shouldn't necessarily be in the Referendum Fund.
No, we could, for example, we could pay all of our IAs out of the Referendum Fund and other non-teachers, but it wouldn't make any difference, because if the money would go away, we would have to reduce that amount of expenses. And we wouldn't necessarily make the reduction just based on whatever had been paid out. For example, if it went away tomorrow, we wouldn't eliminate middle school. But we would eliminate expenses in total that equaled the amount of revenue that we're getting from the Referendum.
I understand that. It just looks like.
Yeah.
That's what you'll be eliminating if the Referendum Fund goes away.
Yeah, so from a perception standpoint, we certainly could move it.
And the important thing to remember, as Roger's kind of showing you how the logistics of this changed, the expenses to the district have not changed at all, and the flow of money coming in has not changed at all. So, really, it's a matter of how that accounting is being done. And so, but I do agree with you, if, when you went out for the Referendum, said this is going to be used for teacher salaries, then that's what, you know, what you should be spending on, because that's what we said. But, you know, with this new system, the flexibility part of it is, you have two buckets, and, you know, you can move the money around by a resolution by you, the board.
Okay. I have another question, if that's okay. Under, in the box with transportation salaries and benefits, you have vehicle maintenance and vehicle insurance. Is that in the transportation fund specifically, or are those funds coming from what was the basic grant and moved over?
No, those, the items that are identified as capital projects, transportation, bus replacement, those three boxes have been supported by those respective funds.
Okay, but it looks like, from what you've done here, this $16 million is moved over from the basic grant, right?
Yes, that has been, and that's moved over to support what now will be new expenses in this new Operational Fund for the business office.
Okay, so you're saying it's just the one box?
Yes.
Okay, so also.
Well, it's just the one box.
Where does the superintendent's salary fall?
What was the one box?
This box.
Yeah, yes, that one, the top left-hand box.
Okay.
Those, that's to represent $16.1 million of expenses that previously have been paid out of the General Fund. Those expenses now will be paid out of the Operational Fund.
Okay, it's just that everything is checked, so that's why it looked like.
Yes.
Pam, I think you're reading too much into the check marks.
Yeah.
So, the Operations Fund is what was these four separate areas before.
Yes.
And so, what's written on the side is Capital Project Fund, Transportation Fund, Bus Replacement Fund. Those are levies from which we get funded. Those are levies from which we get funded from the taxpayers of Carmel.
Yes.
And then the big chunk of money still comes from the state basic grant-
Correct.
-which now we've got to spread that out, instead of before being dumped into just one silo, it needs to be dumped into two buckets.
Correct.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
That was not my question.
Did I, so did you, did I get your question answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have a quick question, and I'm not sure where you want me to ask this question, so I'm going to throw it out there-
That's all right.
-and then you can just tell us. So we're talking about transferring of funds that we will need to-
Yep.
-because the funds need to follow the expense.
Yeah.
So we all understand that part. We know we have to move it with the resolution.
Yep.
I guess I could wait till we talk about here.
Yeah, that's okay.
The frequency is where I'm interested, and how you're going to suggest we do that and plan for that.
I'll get to that, okay. So, so in order to make this happen, there are a number of resolutions that will need to be passed, which, part of them here are here, these are really the resolutions that make this transition. So at the next board meeting on the twenty-fourth, we'll present a resolution to establish the education fund, another resolution to, and the, and the operations fund, another resolution to establish the initial funding for each of the funds, and we'll do that in October. And by initial funding, what that's doing is, is it's giving us authorization to move from the now-defunct general fund, that balance, over to the education fund, and likewise the other funds. And then the last resolution is what you're alluding to, and that is the transfer amounts from the education to the operation. And so as on, as shown on the previous slide, that's approximately sixteen point one million dollars, and then, so we'll move it, and then your question is, is what's the frequency of the move? And so we can really move it, we could move it monthly, weekly, quarterly, yearly.
You could take action each time that happens.
Well, and this may change by, by, by the twenty-second of October, because, you know, all this is new, and so I'm, I'm sure a year from now, there'll be some changes, not just with us, but just with this whole program, but as with anything new. But right now, our latest thinking was, we may ask you to approve, approve this once for a yearly. And, and so by that concept, it, it really is just, doesn't matter in the end, we could do it once a month, it's just a matter of doing it twelve times instead of one time. Because what will, if we do it yearly, regardless of what we do, we, if we do it yearly, for example, then we would get to December, and we'll say, okay, of that, if it's sixteen point one, you know, was that the right number or not? Or are, are we under, if we're under, we're going to come back in December and ask for an amendment. And if we're over, we'll likely do the same thing. Now, one of the things we're going to find out between now and October is, you remember that every year we have an annual routine, where I call it the pea and shell game, where you're approving S-balancing appropriations. So the money doesn't change, but we have some accounts in the red and some accounts in the black, so we've got to balance all that out. And with that example, we're, we're permitted to do that basically after the fact. You give us authority to do it in December, but we actually do it after we see what needs to be moved at the end of the year, and we balance those books. And so if we can do that with this whole discussion about this transfer, then what would happen is, is in January, we would look back and say, okay, what was the exact amount? Then we'd ask for an adjustment to that sixteen point one million, either up or down, we'll be close. But if we wanted to be like exact, that would be a very painless way to, to do it, if, if, because we won't close the books on December thirty-first, that takes about an, almost another month. So we can more or less backdate that if it's acceptable. And, and from a logistical standpoint, that, that would be kind of the easy way to do it. The big P, the big issue is, is what's our intent with regard to how much to transfer? And, and so we're starting with a simplistic, or simple kind of straightforward approach in saying, whatever the expenses are, we, you know, we don't have any unused money over here, so whatever the expenses are, we'll want to transfer that like amount to, to cover those expenses. And so-
It's a bit of quarterly, so we have more opportunity to see how it's moved, how it's transitioned.
We can, again, we can do it any, any frequency we want, and those are the kind of things we'll think through for sure, be, between now and the end of October. Because my initial thinking with that is, is you're also going to be receiving some different financial information, a part of the, you know, that, there's other changes going on besides just this budget issue. And so you'll be receiving, and you know you've been receiving a, a monthly update and so forth, but there'll, that'll be changed a bit, and, and it may include, for example, it may include these transfers, where we very well could come quarterly, for example, and say, okay, by this quarter, we've transferred this much, so we either, we think we're on track, or we think we're behind, or ahead, or whatever. So if, if that were the case, then, then that would address that question. And, and it very well may be, that may be addressed through, through that periodic financial report, rather than the frequency of this resolution.
I think with this new flexibility of moving to the two, you know, the two funds, we're going to have to be flexible too, because especially this first time through, where there's, it's going to be interesting to see how school districts react to that, and what is the most efficient way to do this? And, and Roger's got great ideas, and, but well, the proof will be as we go through it, and he'll make adjustments as we go.
Yep. Okay, so with that, that's, that's kind of the-
I just, so the, the resolution on October twenty-second will be to transfer X dollars, but so would it also make sense to say that going forwards, X percentage is the money comes in, and, you know, when we get our money from the state, that X percent is automatically going to go into operations and X percent into education, so that going forward, it'll be funded that way?
Well, that's why if, if, if we, if we adopt a resolution to do it quarterly or yearly, that doesn't mean that we're not going to transfer but once a year, because we'll, we'll likely transfer every month. You know, we receive the basic grant every month, and so it'll, my initial thinking at least, is that it's likely that we would set it up to when the money comes in, it would just be that routine, here's this month's fund, and this much of it, it's, it's a monthly process, because there are a lot of end-of-the-month kind of things you do in, in the bookkeeping, accounting world, and so that, that likely would just be another one. So that we, we continue to have that flow, because, keep in mind that that operation fund, all the other money from the operation fund, coming primarily from property taxes, comes in twice a year, mostly, and, but the expenses are much more even than that, and so that's why you see on the financial report that we, we go down, and then we get the referendum, and we go back up. So, so this influx of money every month actually kind of helps that situation. And so we'd likely transfer it every month, it, the question, so it's two different things. The frequency of the transfer is one thing, the, 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 the amount and authority to transfer, like either per quarter or per year, is, is related, but a different, different question.
Would it be safe to say, kind of the idea would be that the money would follow the expense?
Yes, exactly.
I think that's probably the best way to put it.
Okay, I'm going to very oversimplify this, so bear with me. So for example, we have a checking account with a bank-
Yep.
-and my, our, I have two checking accounts. And so if, and one of them's my own, like personal, like household things, but if I have too much fun at Target, then I will, on my website, click a transfer, it's going to transfer money over from our main checking. So it is if, our income's the same, our expenses are the same, so that's not going to change, but instead of like going from, we're going from five separate accounts to two separate.
Yeah.
So the, like you said again, so it's just the transferring, when I click a button is going to, but that's going to require board approval.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you-
Okay.
-for appeasing my analogy.
Okay, so those, those slides essentially were to focus in on, on the change and the, and the transition from where we've been to where we're going. So now I'll begin with the, the two, really the 2019 budgets, and, and I'll start with the education fund, and again, the referendum fund, and for purpose of presentation, I've, I've combined these, because again, we see them as basically one, but from a counting standpoint, we, we do keep the money separate. So with, with this fund, the revenue, as I said earlier, is primarily coming from the state formula. We're basing that for eighteen, nineteen, on an increased enrollment of, or ADM of a hundred and fifty students. And then in, in the second half for twenty nineteen, twenty, we're, we're just assuming a two-point-five percent additional funding. And, and because now, we don't have even a formula for that, let alone know what the enrollment is and so forth. So, so, but that's, so that's what the basic, the revenue for the basic grant is based on, and then on our referendum levy, it's based on that growth index of three-point-four percent, which is just under six hundred thousand dollars.
Roger?
Yes?
Can you please refresh our memory on how much we get per student?
About fifty-four hundred dollars.
And how is that compared to state?
Uh, it's lower, it's lower. We're, we're a little better, we used to be the lowest in the state, but now I think we're, now, now we're second lowest.
Zion's been the lowest, we're second lowest, right?
We're, we're second lowest, and I, I think to answer your question, off the top of my head, I believe that the fifty-four hundred is compared to fifty-eight hundred, there's a fifty-eight hundred number out there, and then there's a sixty-two hundred.
The average?
Yeah, one of them is just for the basic grant and the complexity index, and that's the number that's normally compared and used. And then the total number's different, because the total number now, that includes spatial education, honors grant, and a variety of other things, and so, and that money can be really significant, certainly on a per pupil basis, and so, so it can, I think, distort things a bit if you, if you look at that number.
So for a hundred and fifty students- That we are, we have this year, so we'll get fifty-four hundred-
Yes.
-for each student?
Yeah, it's not quite that straightforward, but yes.
Pretty close?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, on expenditures, again, now, particularly now with the education fund, even, even a higher percentage of that, about ninety-six percent is, is for salaries and benefits, so that's a very significant portion of the expenses, and, and we're assuming, well, it's based on two-and-a-half percent salary increase plus increment for eighteen, nineteen, and that the board has already approved, as, as you approved a two-year agreement. And, and then the one percent salary increase plus anchor for nineteen, twenty, that's just, that's kind of a number I, we put in there. It's not exactly an estimate, it's, it's somewhat based on, since we don't have a formula, but it's somewhat based on what the 2018, nineteen formula looks like on a per pupil basis, which is about one-and-a-half percent or thereabouts. And so, but again, and then on the expense side, whatever we assume here, we're going to assume the same on the expense. And so if this went up to three percent, then we just assume salaries will go up three percent, because if we got more money, we'll spend more money. We would just hope to get more money. And then we've got a point seven-five percent assumed for a performance bonus for non-teachers, which is the same as we did for, in 2018. Yep.
If the state does give the school systems more money for school safety-
Yep.
-which fund would that end up in?
Operations.
In operations?
Yeah, you'll see that here later when I get into the detail, but, yes, operations. Okay, and then on benefits, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we, we do have an increase this year, first time in six years, for health insurance and five percent, and then we're projecting five percent in nineteen, twenty. And then in, it's a minor portion of our expenses now, but the non-personnel expenses for, I refer to as non-controllable, which are things coming from the outside, such as our contracted nurses and transfer tuition, really based on current trends, and, and then our controllable expenses like supplies and travel, we've assumed, we've assumed no increase this year in those. Yes. That.
I went through this, and I just, yeah. Okay, so we have a contract with the St. Vincent's nurses, and how many nurses do we have at this point?
Theirs or ours?
Theirs.
Um, let's see, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but about, I think we have six of ours left, so there's about probably fourteen of theirs.
Okay, so we replace ours as, when they retire, they, they become St. Vincent. How much of the St. Vincent nurse do we pay their salary? The whole thing, or do we pay part of it?
Well, we pay all of it.
We pay all the St. Vincent nurses?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is less than ours, by the way, but, but, yeah, I'm hesitating, because I don't, if we didn't pay it, I don't know who else would.
Okay, so we're at fourteen?
Yeah, somewhere in that range, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
Okay, and then can you explain transfer tuition?
Yes, we send somebody to J. Everett Light, for example, you know, it's, it's, that would be an example of a transfer tuition, because they're going to provide the instruction for something that we don't have in that case.
Right.
And then we're going to reimburse them for it.
And so that's non-controllable, because we don't know how many students will be-
Well, I'm using that term because, yes, we don't know how many students, and we, we may not, and we may not, we don't really control the cost. They say if you're going to send them, this is what it's going to cost.
Okay.
So we don't control it in that, we don't take it, and just like with the nurses, we don't, we wouldn't have to continue, but we don't determine the price. Supplies, on the other hand, we can choose whether we increase them or not.
I just wanted to, yeah, to give everybody an idea of what transfer tuition is.
Yes.
It'd be correct to say that, that's, you're basing, making assumptions based on that for budgeting purposes.
Yes, and so what happened, yes, exactly. And so those expenses, it could be higher, it could be lower, but typically, if it's higher, we've also got money, more money than we thought to support it, and likewise, if it were lower.
The general public understands-
No, they wouldn't. Correct, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so then as far as revenue category, you can see by this that majority of our money's for the education fund, referendum fund, is coming from the state basic grant, about seventy-nine percent. And, and I really emphasize, as I always do, this, this eighteen percent property tax, that's really referendum fund. And so we, I know we all can imagine what would, what the, what Carmel schools would be like without that eighteen percent. It would, it would just totally change the complexity of our school district. And so we can't be too appreciative of our taxpayers for supporting that referendum. Then on the expense side, again, it's, it's vast majority of it now is even more so than in the past, is about ninety-six percent for salary and benefits, and the balances on some purchase services and miscellaneous expenses. Purchase services would be, like if we, we, actually, one of them is, if we pay, money flows through us to go to the non-public schools, and, and so, so that's, that's kind of a pass-through, but it's, but it, it comes out as a purchase service.
I just thought of this. When we move money, or actually positions that we're paying-
Yeah.
-out of this particular fund-
Uh-huh.
-will the salary and benefits be a bigger percentage?
Of what?
Because custodians are, are gone, or will it be a lower percentage?
No, from what it used to be?
From what, from that, from this chart?
No, this is the end result, after everything's moved.
Okay, so this is after the custodians and-
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this, these slides are reflecting the 2019 budget, so that's, that's after all that movement has taken place. Yeah, and so, and at ninety-six percent is the example, when it was, when, our general fund was about ninety-four percent, so still majority, by vast majority salary and benefits, but this is even a little more so now, because you've taken out things like utilities, custodians are still salary and benefits, but, but utilities is a pretty good chunk, property insurance, those non-personnel kinds of things, that's a part of what, what goes to the operation fund. Okay, so then the result is, is relative to cash balances, on 1-1-18, we had eight-point-six million in, in these combined funds, and, and if you just go to the bottom, you can see we're, we're projecting to be about eight-point-five, so basically the same, in the context of a hundred and twenty million dollars, we're, we're basically saying our, our, you know, our, our expenses and revenue are very balanced, which is what we want them to be typically, and, and they are, and, and, or we're projecting them. Now, for two thousand nine, for the 2019 budget, again, if we start with eight-point-five, we projected we'll end up at about eight-point-six or seven. And I point out here that this excludes the transfers from the operations fund, so if you were to look back on this slide, you'll see the expenses are a hundred and nineteen million, but now there'll be a hundred and six, because we've moved those other non-instructional kinds of things out of this fund. Then we go to the operation fund, again, it's, it's funded with property tax, excise tax, and those, those education fund transfers, expenses for salaries, we use the same assumptions as, as we use for the education fund. Then here, the non-controllable expenses are things like utilities, where again, we don't have control of the rate, rate increases and so forth, property insurance and so forth, and, and then controllable, things like building improvements, we may not have the, you know, if it's a bid project or something, we may, we don't have control in that sense, but we can choose whether we do it or not. With utilities, as a practical matter, we're going to need utilities, whether we like the cost or not. And so, so, and then we go to the cash balance, and, and for eighteen, it's still the CPF, transportation, bus replacement, so it's about four-point-three million when we started in eighteen, and, and we're projecting about the same at the end of the year, so that, these funds are balanced as well. It's a little bit different here, because transportation is- transportation is, is significantly salaries and, and benefits, um, but the CPF, for example, is not, and so, the cash balance doesn't mean as much on the surface here, because depends where we're at with construction projects and those things, um, in terms of the timing of the payments. And so, again, this, this now includes those transfers, and so, um, if you compare back here, uh, the expenses at, at, um, twenty-six million, and, and now they're gonna be forty-six million, because that's, now, in nineteen, it's going to include the custodians and utilities that, that moved over from what had been the general fund, and now the education fund. So, then there's, there, we still have a capital projects plan, um, and a bus replacement plan, but there, particularly the capital projects plan is completely different than anything you've done in the past. In the past, these, you'll remember that the plan was by building, by category of expenses, all that's gone. And, um, and now what the plan is, is basically a list of projects, and, which you'll see in a minute, and, uh, it includes all proposed expenditures that exceed ten thousand dollars, that are for capital assets, and that would be like equipment or something, and, uh, and then projects considered to be a capital project, and, which would also include technology projects, and by, now there, we're not talking about computers, we're talking about like wiring or something, if we, if we put infrastructure in, and, um, but only if it's ten thousand dollars, so we, we spend a lot of money, as you know, in technology, but we don't buy, but the computers don't cost ten thousand dollars, so, so they're not, the large numbers not a part of this plan. It is a part of the expenses certainly, but it's not a part of the, the plan. The plan's only those items that, that will be ten thousand dollars each, if you, if you will, or more. And keep in mind that, um, for a number of years now, our major expenses for facilities have been out of short-term bonds, not out of our capital fund, and so, so we don't have the kind of large projects out of the capital fund that we once did. And then the bus replacement plan, it's still a twelve-year cycle, but it's only a five-year plan, and, um, uh, so there's not a lot of change there, it's just we stop at five years showing the replacement instead of, instead of twelve. Um, then we owe the debt service fund, and so now, from this point forward, the, the debt service fund has not changed from what it has been in previous years, um, and so we currently have five, uh, debts. We have, have two lease rentals through a building corporation, and, uh, three GO bonds. You can see here our outstanding debts, uh, about one-hundred and seven-point-six million dollars, um, and our GO bonds will all be paid off by twenty-twenty, and all of this existing debt will be paid off by twenty-twenty-four. That's, that's a pretty good, uh, story to tell. Uh, now, you, as you know, the board just recently approved the, uh, moving forward to construct two new elementary schools, so we will have debt being added to this, but I wanna point out, um, the total debt payments, starting here at nineteen, you can see how they significantly decrease, uh, beginning in twenty-one, and so, um, when, which is why even when we build those elementary schools, it, it will add to those debt payments in, in twenty-one and twenty-two and so forth, but they still will not, um, they, we, we still will not be raising the tax rate, if anything, that, you know, the, the potential would be the rate, rate of the debt. That, that's not a bad thing, we just wouldn't, what, it, it would be a bad thing if it went down, and then two years later, we knew it was gonna spike back up, and we've always, uh, our intent is to, has always been to avoid that, and we've been successful with that. Um, so then we have the debt service fund. In the debt service fund, we start with a cash balance of nine-point-two million. In previous years, um, districts were allowed to maintain a, a cash balance that was basically half of the pay, half of the annual payment, because you paid, you paid debt service twice a year, and so the logic was, if something happened, you, you can't afford not to make debt payments, so, so if something happened, you, you could have a, you could have a balance that would, that would pay that first ha, six months of the year, um, and, and then you can deal with it from there, because in Indiana, um, the state of Indiana does not want anybody to default on their debt, because if they do, the responsibility fa, falls back to the state, and, uh, which is, also makes our bonds very attractive, because unless the whole state of Indiana goes bankrupt, the bonds are pretty solid, and so that's a good thing, but, but they've allowed fifty percent. Um, in recent years, I don't remember the exact year, but a, a few years ago, that changed to ten percent, and so as we pay off old debt and put on new debt, uh, our balance in this fund will go down, um, because we're no longer, we're no longer able to maintain the fifty percent. So it's starting to go down a little bit now, um, the, the majority of our debts was still under the fifty percent, and so you can see we end up with about the same cash balance at the end of the year in eighteen, and then likewise, nineteen will be the same way. So the end result of all this, in, in terms of our two thousand nineteen budgets, as it relates to the taxpayer and the rates, um, you can see here that in nineteen, we'll continue to have a nineteen-cent referendum, uh, rate, which will raise about eighteen-point-two million dollars. Uh, our debt service is just over twenty-eight and a half cents, and then the third rate that we will have, uh, will be the operations fund rate at thirty-four-point-four cents, and that totals just under eighty-two cents, and you can see that, um, um, in eighteen, the rate was, uh, just over eighty-one cents, so, so not much change in term of the rate, and some of you may remember when we, uh, promoted our referendum, our projection was, is that the rate would be eighty-three cents. So what happened in the intervening time is, is the assessed value came, was up a little higher than what was projected, uh, which isn't unusual, because we're certainly not gonna tell you a rate that it turns out higher. Uh, we like the story much better if it's a little bit less, as of compared to more, and so that's, that's what you're seeing here, uh, and we still anticipate that going for, for the, for, everything that I see going forward is, our rate will not, um, unless something changes that we have no control over. Um, we will, we will be in an enviable position of, of having a very stable tax rate, um, that will be at or less than, than what we've had, and, and, and still meeting the needs of the school district. So with all of that, um, later in the, in the, um, the agenda, we'll ask for permission to advertise. We, we have three advertisements that we must run in, in order to, uh, proceed, to provide for public, uh, a public hearing, so opportunity for the public to comment on our budget, and, so that's what this advertisement is, and then we also, um, have one for the capital projects plan, and, um, something very similar for the bus replacement plan, both of which we've had in the past, uh, so those would be the action. Then finally, um, in the past, we've had, um, in addition to this PowerPoint presentation, there's what we call the budget guide or the book, and the book has all the detail, or a lot of the detail, um, as well as the, the, it also had the capital plan and, and, um, the payment of, uh, for the debt service. Now, this year, starting in nineteen, right now really, for nineteen, um, the book's been replaced with online, and so, so, uh, the board, as well as the general public, some of this is now, is also so, another change, um, some of this is required by the state, we're, we're also putting on like this PowerPoint, that's not required by the state, but we wanna share as much information as we have with anybody that wants to see it in the public, so, so this info, by click of the button, this information's there, but it's also, um, um, what I'll refer to as more detail the budget is there, and, and, so for example, um, I'll get back to that schedule in a minute, but, but, um, here shows again the levy amounts, so we're, our levies for all, all funds, um, is about sixty-six-point-three million dollars, uh, with the corresponding tax rate of just under eighty-two cents. Uh, then we have miscellaneous revenue, um, and for all these funds except the new education fund, um, the, the majority of the miscellaneous, as you can see here, is, is from, um, excise tax, and, and each of these funds have that, and then, um, the education fund, uh, which is by far the largest, also has the basic grant, and you can see here, that's ninety-nine-point-five million dollars, and another four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for summer school, and then we're showing the minus, um, sixteen-point-one million that would be transferred. Um, then on the expenditure side, um, this is a format that shows our expenditures by what's called object accounts, and, and they're by like salaries and benefits and purchase services and so forth. So you can see here that, you know, seventy-two-point-six-five percent's in salary and another twenty-three percent, so that totals that ninety-six percent of these expenses in the education fund and the referendum fund are, are for salaries and benefits. Um, and then it goes on, and it's, it's by category, so we have like elementary education, middle school, and high school, and you see middle school, as I alluded to earlier, um, is minimal here in the education fund, because those expenses are, are being currently paid out of, uh, most of them are paid out of the referendum fund. And then, um, so you can see the various categories, but it's, it's, the format is, is categorical in nature, showing, um, the various types of expenditures under those major categories. Then when we go to, um, the operations fund, now the operations funds, um, again, a compilation of what was a CPF transportation bus replacement, so you'll see all those expenses here, as well as those transferred expenses formerly paid from the general fund, and, um, there's also some coding changes here that, I'll point out, uh, one of them for an example. You'll see here, um, in, um, let me see if I can get this right now. Well, under the Board of Education, this is not a coding thing, but under health insurance, you know your, that your health insurance is not four-point-four million dollars, and, uh, so what that, what that reflects is, um, retiree health insurance, and, um, or a payment, it's a payment for that, and, and so, um, because again, they're not here now, so they're not directly impacting the, you know, the educational program, they're not in the classroom, and so that, that becomes an operational fund expense. Um, and that's a part of that, that money that was transferred as well. Um, then, um, as we get down through this, and we get to the twenty, um, um, twenty-seven thousands, let me show you here. So here, for example, um, we're gonna, we're going to get into, uh, transportation-related expenses in the twenty-seven thousand, so, um, these, these expenses would have formerly been in transportation, and so you have transportation for vehicle operation of five-point-four million dollars, uh, down further from that, you have the purchase of school bus, so that, that would have been in the bus replacement fund, but now is, again, part of the operations fund. And so, again, that's just some examples of the detail, um, by the various funds. Then, when we go to the referendum fund, you can see here that of nineteen point, almost twenty million dollars, sixteen million of that currently is for middle school, um, uh, and again, it was, it was because, we just simply looked in, in what otherwise would be general fund and, and captured those expenses and, and, uh, and are, are paying for those through the referendum fund. So, um, now if I can remember, so that's some, some of the detail. And then finally, uh, this is the budget schedule, so, so this evening, um, we've had the presentation of the budget, we'll eventually ask for authorization to proceed to advertise these budgets in the capital plan and the, and the bus replacement plan, and then next month, and then we'll, we will, uh, publish those through, through the online gateway system, as well as the capital fund and the bus replacement, uh, will be in the local newspapers as, as well as on our ed, website. That's another change, by the way. We don't do nearly as much advertising as we once did in the newspaper, uh, now that is available to the public online, and a lot of it in this gateway system, uh, as well as our own website. And then on the twenty-second, um, we will, um, uh, ask for you to pass these, well, some resolutions on the twenty-fourth as well, and then on the twenty-second to, to pass other resolutions and, and also to actually adopt the budget and the, and the capital plan and the bus replacement plan. So, with that, I'm done.
Um, how is the public, I mean, I know we're advertising in the paper, we, we don't do as much advertising. You said it'll be more on our website. How will they, the public know that it's more on our website now, instead of-
Well, I don't have a straightforward answer, uh, but, um, any more than when we advertise in the newspaper, they didn't necessarily know that either.
Know that it was there.
And, um, and so, um, I think that ultimately the thinking is, is that the public's more likely increasingly to go to the, if they're interested in the schools, to go to the school website, um, than they are to local newspaper. And, and, you know, many people nowadays, you know, they don't read the local newspapers, so, so they're looking to other forms of, of, for information, and so, uh, now we, so, so we don't have a formal way to advertise. Uh, we certainly can put it in the, the communications that we already have established to go to parents, um, as an example.
And of course, uh, when Courtney Taylor does her board update, it will be in there, and, uh, we'll be bringing attention to it at that point in time.
Yes.
Uh, I have a question about the capital project fund.
Mm-hmm.
You said currently the capital budget is presented by the building, by the plan?
Yes.
And now it will change to everything over ten thousand. Is it just a presentation format change, or is it a content change?
No, it's a presentation. In other words, the expenses, uh, actually, it almost goes the other way, because in the capital plan previously, uh, the plan itself was by location. And so, so what, the, the major change is, is from one plan to the other. The expenses haven't really changed much, um, um, you know, the amount we're spending on technology is about the same, and, and, and so the categories of expenses, and when, when the items are expensed, they are by location. So if you were to look at our, our books, um, you would be able to see what we spent at Carmel High School, for example. Um, it's just not, it's, but it's, it's part of the bookkeeping, it's not a part of the plan, if you will. Now they want a plan for those ten-thousand-dollar capital assets, and, and they're still using the term "plan." It's, it's really, a, a better descriptor would probably be a list or something, I mean, it's, it's not really a plan in the sense, the originally, the, the plan kinda was a plan, because it said, you know, we planned us to do this or that, and spend this much money under this category at that school, and so they've kept the term, um, but they totally changed the definition of it.
Thanks.
Huge amount of code change.
Mike, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Roger, as we have a few moments, well, after this evening, as we have questions, it'll pop up, I'm sure, as we have some time to unpack what the expenditures are and, and follow that. So, um, thank you very much, very thorough, we really appreciate your time and effort, and, um, explanations in helping us learn how this new process is going to impact us and how we go, move forward. So with that, we're going to our first action item on the agenda, adoption of policy thirty-five-hundred teacher appreciation grants. And to that, we turn to the policy committee.
Yes, um, policy thirty-five-hundred teacher appreciation grants. By law, we have to change this or adopt this every year. Um, the only change on this particular year would be the ma, meaning that it's the two thousand eighteen teacher appreciation grant instead of the two thousand seventeen, because the way we are handling the grant is the same, it's just a different year. So we are, um, putting this to the board, since we do have to adopt this yearly, and we do have to do, do this before September fourteenth.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get a motion on the table to approve the adoption of policy thirty-five-hundred teacher appreciation grant?
So moved.
Second. Second. Thank you. Discussion. My only discussion, more of a question. We are sending in the teacher appreciation grant along with what? This, some, we have to send two things in?
Evaluation. The teacher, the current teacher evaluation that we're using this year, the tool.
The tool. Yes. Okay, okay, the tool.
Which we'll be working on this year, and maybe our, this will change next year.
Okay, and you had an opportunity to talk to our association?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, I was communicating with, with Pete O'Hare about that, and, uh, he's supportive of this.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of supporting adoption of policy thirty-five-hundred signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we've got the permission to advertise. Roger.
Thank you. So again, uh, we're requesting authorization to advertise, uh, for a public hearing on our two thousand nineteen budgets, capital projects plan, and the five-year bus replacement plan, and that hearing would take place on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Roger. So we need to get a motion on the table to approve permission to advertise for the two thousand nineteen budgets, the capital projects plan, the bus replacement plan, and to conduct the hearing on September twenty-fourth. So moved? Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of supporting our permissions to advertise all three plans and the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And I appreciate we have been here a while, um, and I appreciate everybody's engagement, because I, I think we did a really nice job unpacking some big, big topics, big ideas, and, and we're doing some great things for our school community. Um, I know a number of us had an opportunity- I know a number of us had an opportunity to attend ISBA, and we are, we have lots to share, so we are very, very excited. I was able to go to the delegates' assembly, so we did have, ISBA is adopting 10 legislative priorities. A lot. 10 huge priorities. It is a budget year, so I think our focus, as we develop our own legislative priorities, will probably be more on the lines of financial, because this is our opportunity to help fund some of these unfunded, either unfunded mandates, or some of the other areas that I know we are particularly interested in growing in our school district. Intuition support is always first and foremost, a great way to support our students. So a couple, three of the legislative priorities are a carryover from last year. I will be sharing this with Mike as we develop, as a board, our legislative priorities, which we will adopt before we go into our legislative communications. I expect, or I'm anticipating that on the September 24th meeting, those of us who went to ISBA will have an opportunity to share a mini-report of what we learned, and, because we went to some pretty powerful, powerful sessions, some really, you know, great keynote speakers. Michael Dorn was fabulous. Superintendent McCormick, Dr. McCormick was fantastic, just a lot of great stuff for us to bring back. And one thing I did want to bring up, and I'm hoping we can maybe consider this is a workshop on the pathways, the graduation pathways. It was really stressed and brought up quite significantly that our eighth graders will be the first, our current eighth graders will be the first group to have to have designated pathways. I don't know, I'm very, I'm not very familiar with these graduation pathways, and we're hoping you could give us more information.
Absolutely, and I know the high school hoax have been working real hard on getting that set up, so we'll get in touch with Dr. Harmison and work with, with Valerie Peel, his assistant, who I think is the spearhead in that, and we'll get a workshop set up for that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Mike, you have-
Yeah, I just, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure that everybody saw the article on the front page of the Indianapolis Star yesterday on RSROs and DJ Shep. It was very nice to, to see that recognition, and it was a nice story. And then also, Leila shared with the board a thank you from Special Olympics that, I'll let you kind of share that, but I thought that's important for our community to know.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Special Olympics had their EKS games this past weekend, it goes a, a series of three different weekends, and I received an email from Jeff Muller, I happen to serve on the board with Special Olympics, so he had my personal account, sent me an email, "A huge thank you to our, our employees." He reached out to, well, he reached out to Carmel Middle, Darren Monk over at Carmel Middle. What happened, because of the weather, they were going to have to cancel one of their events, a significant event that impacted over 500 athletes. And he reached out to Carmel Middle, and within minutes, we had the schools, we had multiple schools that they were able to use, there were the facilities. Vivian, one of the custodians, came in, worked 10-hour straight shift, and did an amazing job, and just was such a helpful, I mean, it's just servant leadership going on over at Carmel Middle and within our school district, but they were so appreciative of what they were able to do on the spur of the moment, and they will definitely be receiving board kudos, and, yes. And we really appreciate Jeff Muller, the executive director and president of Special Olympics of Indiana, for sharing that with us. So, and he was a former, who was our coach over at the middle school and then at the high school for cross-country. So he does have a relationship with, with Carmel Clay Schools, and we pulled through. I know we are very active with our best buddies program and our champions together, and so it's, it's a neat partnership. So, thank you for bringing that up, Mike.
Dr. Pearsford, do you have anything you'd like to share before we close?
No, I think we've, we've expended our time pretty well here, but I do, thank you for forwarding that, and that was amazing teamwork in a very short amount of time to serve 500 kids and make sure they had a good time with a cornhole tournament, and I'm just very proud of our team, as always. So, but thank you, and, and I want to throw a little kudos to Roger. He covered some very technical, very difficult, new things to explain, did so very well, so kind of, thanks, Roger, appreciate your work on that. And also, again, with the, with the Wellness Center, I am a patient, I've gone once, and, and everything they said was true, I was treated like a king, and also, I, I, another kudos to Carmel Clay Schools for having mental health therapists at the Wellness Center. I've been trying to do that for several years, and, you know, there's a stigma about mental health, and when you place people in that setting so that people can be directly referred to get help right there, and it's just the same as medical condition and anything else, that just speaks huge of Carmel Clay Schools taking care of their employees that way.
And can you remind the community they will have the Mental Health Fair on Thursday night?
Yep. Over at the high school, 6 o'clock? 6:30 to 8. So, yes, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Come and join us. Okay, meeting adjourned.